Call to order this committee of the whole meeting for Friday, June the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The TNRD acknowledges that we connect with many First Nations across our vast regional district. And today we are located on the Kamloops to Shakwemec territory situated within the unceded ancestral lands of the Shakwemec Nation. The TNRD appreciates the partnership that we have with Kamloops to Shakwemec and respect the territory and land on which we gather today. We have the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting from April twenty-first, if you can cast your minds back that far. Move adoption. Thank you, Vice Chair Smith. Second by Director Getz. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none on the question, all those in favor, opposed if any. That's Carrie. Welcome, Director Sarai out there in Zoomland. So it's playtime at the TNRD this morning. We have some big display at the back there from the TNRL. We've got a lot of library staff here, and I'm going to turn it over to Chief Librarian Judy Moore to take us through the morning.
It's obvious that I don't come here often enough. So my name is Judy Moore. It's my privilege to be joining you this morning. Our agenda on behalf of the library is is a little bit irregular. We're going to start off with a bit of a show and tell and a scavenger hunt and some fun exercises. So you'll absolutely want to play along. By this point, you'll have noticed that you have library cards that have been provided to you. They are active. So we'll be having some fun with that. Joining me this morning is my library team, my management team and coordinators who help move our library system forward. So my pleasure to introduce them so that they don't have to be at the podium and be reintroduced. So starting with Melissa Lowenberg. Melissa is our manager of community libraries and engagement. So she represents and looks looks after all of the libraries outside of Kamloops. Welcome, Melissa. I also have here Margot Schiller. Margot Schiller is the manager of the Kamloops Libraries and Engagement. So anything that happens with any of our libraries in Kamloops has Margot's marks all over them. So welcome, Margot. I have Jenny Abramczek in the back there, Jenny. And Jenny is that person who supports all of our library operations. Her job is as manager of discovery and support services. So she's all things collections, our website, all of those things that that we do to support not only the Kamloops libraries, but the community libraries outside. Welcome, Jenny. We have Emily Olson, who is our coordinator of e-library and collections. So anything related to the library's website, any of our e-collections, as well as all those physical items that we work hard to move and put into patron hands across the system. So welcome, Emily. And last but not least, one of our big voices at the TNRL coordinator, Dara Hill. She's marketing and marketing and communications, and she's our newest coordinator. So we're absolutely delighted to have somebody that can really help advise, let the public know of all the really great things that we have going on here at the library. So at this point, I'm going to ask Melissa Lowenberg to please come up. And she's going to get cracking on our little scavenger hunt. So please play along with us. And she's going to be joined by our our team back here, and they'll be walking the room, helping you out. So you're going to want to play along. Remember, in my message, I did indicate that there would be prizes, right? Prizes. Okay, so let's get started. Thanks.
Good morning. Can you hear me all right? Okay, so. Okay, one. Okay, thank you. Okay. So we're going on a scavenger hunt today. Imagine, if you will, it's July seventh, and you're camping at South Green Lake. Oh, no, it starts to rain. That wasn't part of your plan. Where's the mobile library today? In front of you, all of you have a schedule? Who can find where the mobile library is on July seventh? It's a Friday. Woo-hoo, we have a winner. Okay, yay. Winner, winner. Emily. Thank you very much. All right. And and just so you're aware too, the schedule is also posted on our website. So residents can also find it there, and then they can find the next time the mobile library is in their area. So it's a really helpful location on the website for doing that as well. You can favorite your stop. And it's a fact, the mobile library has twenty-nine rural and urban stops on a three-week rotation. It traveled twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy kilometers in two thousand and twenty-two. That's like driving from Kamloops to Fredericton, New Brunswick, up back six times. And so you can see our lovely, award-winning, designed mobile library there in the bottom. Okay, so who's ready for round two? All right, imagine, if you will, it's Saturday, and you're looking after some kids. Oh, they're bored. Oh, you've heard that. I'm bored. Who hasn't heard that? But oh, joy, you need something fun to do now. Find out what programs are happening at the TNRL. So this hint, you'll need to fire up your devices, navigate to the tnrl.ca. And then we have a hint at the bottom. And we have our helpers roaming. If you need a hand, you can give them a wave. We have a winner. Director Blackwell, congratulations. We've got a prize on en route to you. Oh, a spinning wheel. Oh, I hear some some challenge being thrown out there today. Well, it's a fact, the TNRL hosted fifteen hundred and twenty-six programs in two thousand and twenty-two. So that means just over twelve thousand two hundred and seventy-seven residents attended from across the regional district. That's something to be very proud of. Okay, so I'm going to hand it off to my colleague, Margot. Good morning, everyone. Ready for our next scenario? So congratulations, you've won a trip to Hawaii. There's no room left in your suitcase, however, but you want to bring along some great beach reads. Navigate to the Libby app for ebooks, e-audiobooks, and digital magazines. Here is your hint. Find Libby in the App Store on your mobile device or in your browser. And there is what it looks like. You're on to us, are you? Wow, way to go. Yeah. Good job, everyone. So it's a fact, one in ten Canadians has a print disability. The TNRL offers free specialized accessibility services, such as our Library Home Service program, Braille books, and thousands of accessible audiobooks. Okay, here we go. Number four, imagine. There's been a big storm and the Cokahala is closed. Oh, no, your Vancouver Sun will not arrive today. Where can you read the day's news? Wow, I didn't hear. Who said that? That's amazing. Round of applause for you. Yes, visit the Press Reader database to find digital newspapers and magazines, including your local favorites like the Vancouver Sun, the Province, and the Globe and Mail. Oh, you didn't even need the hint, but there it is. If you look in the digital library in the main menu, you can select digital newspapers and magazines from that list, or you can search for the Press Reader in your App Store. Yeah. There are also a great selection of, yeah, newspapers and magazines on there, so popular magazines too. So it's a fact, the library is your gateway to newspapers, genealogy, magazines, language learning, ebooks, e-audiobooks, and more. Some examples are Rocket Languages, where you can you can learn a variety of different languages. We talked about Press Reader. We have ancestry.com if you're wanting to do some family genealogy. That is an excellent resource. And of course, Libby. And we also have our very own News Hound, which is B.C. historical newspapers. All right, I'll turn things now over to my good colleague Jenny.
Think this thing keeps getting lower and lower. Okay, thank you, Margot. Okay, next scenario, imagine. Netflix has increased its fees again. What are you gonna do? Well, luckily, the library offers streamed movies and TV shows for free. Let's check out Hoopla. This is one of our newer databases that we've got. We've had it for probably two years now, about two years. Yeah, very popular. So to find Hoopla, you can select digital library from the menu and choose digital, video, and music. When you launch Hoopla, you can scroll down and you'll check out all the things that Hoopla has to offer. So we've got Mang- I think Manga is the newest collection. They've got comics, more ebooks, more e-audiobooks, and of course, all those movies and TV shows that you might like to binge. I think there's also an app for Hoopla as well. So if you prefer to use the app, you can do that. Did Chair Roden, did you find it? You, oh, you found it. Oh, wow. All right. Yeah. There you go. So another fact for you, our digital resources are very popular. They were accessed over two hundred and fifty thousand times in two thousand and twenty-two. And our website, tnrl.ca, was visited over seven hundred and twenty thousand times last year. Okay, this is, I think, our second-to-last scenario. So imagine that you run a small business and you need to train your new admin assistant in accounting practices. How could you do that training without driving costs? LinkedIn Learning is the answer. I can't remember how much a LinkedIn Learning account costs if you're paying for it these days. I think it's forty-something a month. But you can get it for free through the library. So we've got over over five thousand courses for learning new skills. So those focus primarily on technology skills, creative skills, you know, Excel and Word and all that kind of good stuff. So to find that, you can select learning and research from the digital library menu and then scroll down to LinkedIn Learning. What's that? He's already got it. Was somebody found? Somebody found it. All right. Oh, Dara's coming around with the good stuff. Right. So it's a fact, we've got free Wi-Fi at all our TNRL locations, and that includes our mobile library. And patrons can even connect outside libraries twenty-four seven. So even if we're not open, they can drive up and and log on to our Wi-Fi for free and do what they need to do. And I'm going to turn it over now to Judy. All right, our last little fun scenario is you're out of town for the summer, but you really want to stay current on what's with what's happening at our library system. So what we want you to do here is look towards signing up for our monthly newsletter. So here's our hint, scroll to the bottom of the homepage and enter your email. Randy Castle says it's safe to do so. That's right. Done. Signed up, signed on the dotted line. All right, so it's it's a fact for congratulations. So it's it's a fact. And for the newer board members, you might be surprised to learn that we lend out musical instruments. We have a wonderful partnership with Mike Melchmore here with River Song Guitars. So we lend out guitars, we lend out ukuleles. We lend out community passes. So for individuals who'd like to, you know, use the pool and the parks and recreation centers, we lend those out as well. The Merit recreational facilities, they participate in this too. We have home efficiency devices and literacy kits and book club kits and just about something for everyone. So I'll invite you at the break to come in and take a look at all of our wares. You might be surprised. And please, as board members, please pass this message along. All right, question.
I just have a question. When people sign up for the pool passes, that once a year or is that anytime that it's available?
Yeah, so that's an excellent question. What they would do is go online on our library system. I think it's under our library community partnerships, and they would click on to passes and place a hold, much like anybody would for any other item that we have in the collection. So, yeah. Forgot to mention as well that we have wildlife park passes for a family of four. We've got sixteen of them. That's kind of what got the party going with with the library system and our community connections. They were very generous some years ago and continue to honor this by making it available to families across the regional district. All right, so I'm gonna I'm gonna change gears here a little bit and start talking to you about the library facilities plan, about our libraries. And I'm going to start off with why. Why? Let's begin with why. So with technology at people's fingertips, why do we need bricks and mortar libraries anyways? Forty percent of B.C. adults struggle to read a newspaper, fill out a work application, or even understand a lease. Public libraries play an important role in supporting literacy skills development, opening doors to educational unemployment opportunities, and break the poverty cycle. Social isolation and loneliness are now understood as major public health issues. And we know with the pandemic, that certainly intensified people living alone and in more isolation. The library, and our public library particularly, is the only true free public space where everyone is welcome. One of the biggest societal trends is adults living alone. Our libraries bring people together, fostering connections and community interaction. In recent months, just a fact, we saw the highest attendance ever at author readings across the region. We had two hundred and twenty here in Kamloops, forty at Clearwater, no, fifty at Clearwater, forty at Barrier, sixty-three at Chase, twenty-seven at Logan Lake. Just marvelous, marvelous seeing people getting together in community. A recent study of Canadian libraries put return on investment at over five dollars for every dollar spent. Stats Canada reports that for every one percent rise in literacy levels, it translates to a two-point-five rise in productivity and a thirty-two billion addition to Canada's GDP. The public library is the community's number one contributor contributor to supporting a reading culture and the creation of a literate literate society. Great libraries are the backbone of healthy communities. Great libraries create great cities. So the Thompson-Nicholay Regional Library is proud of its twelve branches and its mobile library, all owned by the TNRD. This is an important point. Wisely, all of our locations are owned by the regional district, really helping us to support cost control. So that's that's important to note. We set aside monies every year for capital improvements that include facility upgrades and technology improvements. You'll notice on this slide that, you know, we endeavor to create real operational efficiencies. So boy, were we lucky during the pandemic that we could reopen as quickly as we did owing to self-check. We've got patron self pickup of holds and, as Jenny mentioned earlier, wireless, which is a really critical service for people across the regional district. So let's flip ahead to Foundation for the Future, two thousand and twenty-three. So in two thousand and nineteen, architect and library consultant Lauren Stara supported the work of the library's first facilities master plan, which was our two thousand and twenty version. The former board approved The former board approved this plan in February twenty twenty. Then came March twenty twenty. Then came the change of TNRD leadership. Then came our forensic audit. And finally, the devastation of Litton, the village of Litton and our library owing to wildfire in twenty twenty-one. So it's, 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 it's been an incredibly difficult time since we released our first facilities master plan. So I thought for the new board, it was obvious to, to update this plan to twenty twenty-three and it is attached in your report. So just in general terms, our outlying communities in the Thompson-Nichol Regional District are, are adequately or well-served by the library buildings and they are appropriately placed. Aligning with TNRD's growth strategy, the twenty twenty-three plan reiterates the need to address the growth in Kamloops while continuing to maintain strong, strong services in the rural communities. So the facilities master plan, it identifies ten key priorities. So what I'm gonna do is, is I'm gonna start with nine and I'm gonna do a backwards count here. So priority number two. So five-year plan for library renovations. So despite the fact that we had the pandemic and everything that ensued those last three years, we were able to finalize our updates to the Ashcroft Library. Very excited about that. Ashcroft is the jumping off point for a whole lot of innovations that we work through. And unexpectedly, and to support the growing needs of the TNRD, we also made physical changes within the civic building and the downtown library. So we moved our library administration and our discovery and support services to the second floor of the library, freeing up that third floor space that's been discussed for a purpose-built emergency operations center as well as much-needed space for some of the departments within the TNRD. So twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, we are looking at improvements at, at Clearwater. It's yet to be determined in terms of a Litton rebuild. We definitely want to be paying some attention to the North Kamloops Library, looking at enhanced children's and teen space as well as doing something really fun and playful in the outside, outside garden, really targeting small kids. And then finally, in that five-year window, we'd be looking at Chase as well. Any questions on this slide? Yes.
Just one update. We have a pollinator garden in our library now in Chase.
I have heard that. I can't wait to get out to Chase. I know that Michelle Pottle, the interim branch head, has been working with Melissa Lowenberg, our community libraries manager on the pollinator garden. So we're really excited and hope that we'll be able to continue in that vein and see other pollinator gardens across the RD. Okay, so I'm excited about the next slide. I think Director Blackwell and Director Yusuf should be really excited about this one. Alright, here we go. Clearwater, exterior concept. I'm liking it. Are you liking it? So, so it was a few weeks ago, Melissa Lowenberg and I met with branch head Kaylee Prime. For those of you that don't know Kaylee Prime, she's doing amazing work up, up the north Thompson and spirited, fun, and, and we lovingly refer to her as a teen whisperer because she's actually brought teens back to, to the library. At any rate, walking through that space and, and we certainly were conversant with the space, but walking through it with Kaylee with fresh eyes, we realized that while we wanted to make internal physical improvements, we had to address the outside. So at any rate, this concept was drawn up by Stephen Bushnell, who worked with us on the physical improvements here at the downtown library where we saw the addition of the café. We launched out eight hundred square feet to create a café space. Stephen's that same guy and he's provided us with the concept here. So I think it's fun. I think it's playful. I think that the coloration, those panels are inclusive. The landscaping looks fantastic. And what I noticed was just the lack of, of any barriers. We know that we've got some issues in terms of accessibility at, at Clearwater. So we hope to begin to address that. But it's amazing what you can do with some new hardy plank siding, new signage. You know, those windows are the same. They've just been dressed up. But at any rate, this forty-two hundred square feet, but space will, will really pack a punch for us up ahead. So really excited to show that to you. Alright, this one's for you, Director Rain. A library in Sun Peaks. So noticed incredible population growth with the, the, the change from twenty twenty-one census, three hundred and seventeen to five hundred and fifty to fourteen hundred at twenty twenty-one. People want to live in Sun Peaks. A number of years ago, actually, prior to me, starting as your chief librarian, under your former administration, seven hundred and fifty thousand was earmarked and is held in reserve for some form of co-located library development. So good fun. I especially like that image on the left-hand side. Thinking, wow, wouldn't it be nice to be able to see the skiers or even possibly ski right into the library? I think that would be kind of neat. Sorry, what's that? Carefully, ski right to the entrance of the library. Okay. Sun Peaks is a, is currently served by the mobile library and it's a very busy stop location. We've added a drop box for library materials for resident convenience there. But at any rate, we anticipate that in the years ahead that we'd be looking at some sort of high-tech library, given the demographics of that community. Priority four. So everyone benefits from universally accessible space. And we have made some improvements. So Clinton had some fairly significant improvements. A new ramp was installed there, power doors into that, that smaller library. I would characterize Chase as being about fifty percent complete. So there is a back entrance that, that has been made accessible. But we, we, we do wrestle with the, the grade on the front of the library and installing a ramp there. So at some point, we'll want to address that as well. The civic building has seen some, some really good enhancements. Power doors into the parcade has, has been a real important first or an important step. However, our washrooms on the main floor in the atrium space will, will need to be addressed at some point as well. We're looking forward to the work of the newly formed accessibility committee and representatives from a number of, of groups representing persons with disabilities that will be helping us under Director Blackwell's and Director Haywood's leadership in that regard. So, so while we think about our physical spaces, we, we expect that there may be other recommendations moving forward from that committee as well. Alright, RFID. RFID isn't anything new to public libraries. This is perhaps a newer notion to us. And basically, what RFID is, is a process that sees a computer readable chip added to each library item. So it's embedded in each library item. And it would enable us with the proper technology to move materials faster and more efficiently. And for, on the staffing front, it would reduce any, any risk of repetitive strain injuries and create a streamlined inventory process. So it'd really zip materials in and out of patrons' hands a whole lot quicker than, than it does right now. It's been in use in public libraries for, oh, some twenty years. Of course, industry uses it. Amazon, that's how they move their materials and, and others very, very effectively. What we do note is that the costs have dramatically decreased. So probably by about ninety percent. So we will be looking and determining the feasibility of, of RFID technology in the next year or so. Alright, priority six is the TNRL Service Extender. And so we're very excited about this. We're very excited about this. And as mentioned, we did do renovations to Ashcroft Library. And it was really our jumping off point for this new technology. The technology is available through vendors, costly through vendors. But working with our in-house IT staff, they helped create a solution for us. And so rather than me telling you about Service Extender, I'm gonna turn it over to Chair Roden. I'm kidding. But let's, let's start this. But, but not really, but not really. So
I do actually, I have used a service extender, so I could talk about it, but
fantastic. It's quite fantastic. Anyways, let's, let's, let's stop hearing from me and let's turn our attention to the screen, please. Like that. I can tell everybody likes the music. It's fantastic. So you may recall that, that TNRD has submitted for an award, a UBCM award for the creation of the Service Extender. So we're awfully proud of what we've been able to accomplish in-house here and think that it has real potential for other communities across the region. Alright, any questions on Service Extender? Yes, go ahead, please.
Through the chair. That's a great program. Now, is the library under some sort of video security, sort of at all times when Service Extender is in use?
Yeah, yes, yeah. That's a really great question. So Service Extender for Ashcroft is tied to the North Kamloops Library. And so there are surveillance cameras that are at the Ashcroft Library, whatnot. So somebody at the North Kamloops Library would be able to attend or, you know, can certainly answer questions if, if something arises.
I sort of realized, sorry, that, that part of, you know, the push button to help type of thing. But is there actually eyes on the place when Service Extender, some places, somebody sort of physically monitoring it? That, that if there were issues or whatnot and there's no attendant there, is there remote attend?
Yeah, so I think, I don't know how to best answer this question. I don't know how to best answer this question. So what we, what we see are mostly people coming in individually, not when other people are there necessarily. We have safeguarded people's use of the Service Extender by having patrons register. So you, each of our patrons who is registered for Service Extender has to go through kind of a a list of questions, dos and don'ts, that kind of thing. So that we mitigate any concerns that people may have. But yes, we do have cameras that, that are there. We, we do not have somebody who's watching all, all the time, but that is, is active and live in the North Camloops Library. Thank you. Chair Roden.
Perhaps you can reiterate the point that we talked about, about why this works in small rural libraries, and it's because the staff know the customers or the patrons.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, so what would not happen is somebody who's coming into community and, and just going into the library. People who are registered for the service are vetted by staff and as mentioned, there's a whole process in terms of people agreeing to the service and, and, you know, conduct and, and so on and so forth. So again, it's, it's mitigating any sort of issues that we might have. So not all patrons, perhaps even wanting the service would be able to. You know, if they're. Yeah, yeah. Carefully, carefully worded. Yeah. Yeah, if we don't think there are good options for it, then, you know, we would, we would decline. Yep. Thank you for your questions. All right, so. Going to try to get to the next slide. Can I try again? Oh, there we go. I think that's it. Okay. Whoops. Whoa. Look at me. Uh-oh. Okay, there we are, back on track. So so one of our, one of our other key priorities is, is, is branding of our, our spaces. We want to ensure that, you know, the library is aligned with the mothership, of course, the Thompson-Nichol Regional District. And we've worked hard to create graphics and, and visual identity that really syncs with that. We're very proud of our, our mobile library back when it saw its first days on the road with its, with its bold new rap. It won the Hermans International Visual Identity Platinum for its design world, worldwide design competition. Very exciting. And very much the jumping off point for our moniker and all of our collateral materials, all of our signage is let your imagination run wild. So that's, that's been really good fun. We've got a marketing committee that, that works through really everything that, that we introduced, just to ensure that, that we are aligned. One of the things that we have started to do is work towards indigenizing our spaces. And in certain elements, you know, we will see local First Nations represented in that, that program as well. That poster on the left-hand side, we're very proud of. That was Kookpee Casimir. As she supported our first one book, one community read project. I, I'm delighted to tell you that it was just this last week that, that the province has distributed twenty, two hundred and fifty of these posters for all public libraries here in British Columbia. And I think it's, it's a, it's a worthy tribute to her and, and her commitment to working with community and, and truth and reconciliation. So, yeah. Our Ashcroft Library, again, kind of like a big test for us. And a lot of the visual identi- identity items that you see are, are coming right from there. What you're not seeing in that, that video, and it's just, it was just one of those things. We had a videographer go out and shoot the video. But there was no Ashcroft Library sign. So I kept looking at the fact that there wasn't a sign and that, that we didn't have the window coating, but Chair Roden, I understand that it's, it's coming either next Friday, so just a week from, from now. So we're playing catch with, catch up with a lot of vendors post-pandemic. So priority eight is to ensure that we have maximum flexibility. So we're really paying close attention to what it is that we're purchasing in terms of shelving, being able to, you know, quickly bring our program together and really maximize, maximize our spaces. Of course, we always take a page from retail. So face-out displays of library materials and programs, et cetera, is, is, is really important. And you'll see that reflected in our spaces as well. Number nine, so improving programming meeting room spaces. This is a worldwide trend. So not just here in, in the Thompson-Nichol Regional District, but elsewhere. Meeting room spaces are becoming more and more coveted. We've got two, two meeting rooms at the downtown library here. And right now, one is serving as, as a temporary office for TNRD staff, but the other meeting room is constantly used. It's a bit of a goldfish bowl, so I always kind of look to see who's in there. And a lot of times, I don't know who these individuals are. So we know that community is coming in, they're booking the spaces. Jenny and Emily have worked on the ability for the Thompson-Nichol Regional Library for patrons to book their own spaces. So definitely moving towards that self-serve model. So you know, people can book a space at Ashcroft, they can book one at Clearwater, Chase, Logan Lake, et cetera. So that's pretty exciting. So creation of dynamic children's spaces and teen areas, you caught a glimpse in, in that little Ashcroft video of some of the children's interactives that we have. And as, as we move forward into bigger spaces, we're going to have more interactives. We know that they're, they're a big hit with kids. And I think suffice to say that by investing in our children's and teen spaces, we're growing future library patrons. So really, really important that we, we shine a light on that priority ten. Okay, here we go, folks. Our number one, one priority, which is that third Camloops Library, it's the one that keeps me up at night. And in our facilities master plan, we, 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 we recognize, we've done the analysis that our population growth in Camloops is, is quickly outstripping the capacity of, of the two libraries. And their locations within the city. We know that it's tried and true in terms of library literature, that, that the biggest indicator of library use is proximity to the library. So anything that's really beyond four kilometers is going to see less use. So that's why you see these, these bigger cities with, with libraries, really kind of dotting, dotting municipalities, so that they really, you know, ensure that they provide that service close at hand. So I'm going to provide you a bit of a rationale for why it is that we need this, this new additional twenty-five thousand square foot library. All right, so population of the regional district is anticipated to increase by twenty-nine thousand people and eighteen thousand new housing units within the next twenty-five years. Eighty-five percent of these new residents are expected to locate within, within Camloops and, and, and Merritt. And for a total population in Camloops for over some hundred and twenty thousand population. The most significant growth is in the city southwest. So primarily Aberdeen, but in these areas as well. Adjacent to Aberdeen. And we're beginning to see lots of population growth, of course, down Barnhartville, Juniper, and then to the north, Bachelor Heights, and continuing expansion in, in the west side area, et cetera. Yeah, so, but focused on the, the increase of population in the city southwest. So the future is here. The downtown library is simply not appropriately located to address the additional population growth. And a third Camloops library is needed. Here's the Holy Grail. Here is the, the comparators for other comparable municipalities, municipalities that we, we look at in terms of number of libraries. And, and all sorts of other factors as well. So the metric of square footage per capita is when we have measuring a library's capacity to serve its patrons. So at point three-three, which is, which is where we're at right now, it is lagging behind both in terms of square footage and the number of locations when we compare it to those, those other municipalities, Kelowna, Nanaimo, and Red Deer. So if square footage remains the same by twenty-twenty, our per capita square footage will, will drop to only point two-nine. Very low. So if we look at these, these municipalities right now, so let's take a look at Kelowna. Certainly Greater Kelowna, it has a a bigger population. It stands at, at five. That five count does include the West Kelowna and another location really kind of right proximate to the, the, the city limits. Nanaimo has three, three libraries. There's the flagship North Nanaimo Library. There is a library within one of the malls, for those of you that are familiar with Nanaimo, and then their downtown location. I was in recent discussion with their chief librarian, Ben Hyman, and they are beginning to plan for that next library and to address population growth in, in the South Nanaimo area. Red Deer, you know, I think really arguably the same population as, as ours here in Camloops, and, and they have three as well. So I did comment earlier in terms of distance. It is a key factor in determining the library use. I heard it said when I started, I hear it less often now, but I heard it said when I started, people would refer to chapters as the library at Chapters Aberdeen. True. I see my, my O'Reilly, Director O'Reilly nodding his head a little bit. So, and, and, and factoid, because we presented facts this morning, is that we actually had an additional library back in nineteen seventy-five in the Valley View area. For those of you that go back that far, you might remember that location. It was certainly before my time here. But yeah, so we have not had an additional location created since that time. I expect questions.
Is, is your mic working properly?
I'm not sure. Is it?
I don't think so.
Okay. Oh, is that her?
Okay, yeah, yeah, just a little bit closer.
Thank you. I'm, I'm moving around here and using my hands. Go ahead, Director Yusuf.
Thank you, Chief Librarian Moore. Just a question about the comparators here. I, perhaps my lack of knowledge. So the Kelowna, Nanaimo, and Red Deer libraries, are those municipal or regional district owned?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. Red Deer, I believe, is municipal. Kelowna is part of the Okanagan Regional Library System, so they're kind of that hybrid mix like we are. Some urban libraries and some rural libraries. And Nanaimo is part of the Vancouver Island Regional Library System. So I think Vancouver Island Regional Library System, some thirty-nine locations. Okanagan Regional Library System, thirty, and then us at, at twelve locations. Thanks. Any other questions on this slide? Yes.
Thanks. With the, the sort of southwest sector as being the preferred location, is there an actual location that has been deemed available and suitable to to expand on?
I'll go ahead. I, I saw you put down your pen, Scott, so. So we've been on a journey these last number of years. And we have looked at in excess of fifteen locations. Those locations have come and gone. And any Realtor that you talk to here in, in, in Camloops will say that there is, there is a dearth of commercial real estate and options. So believe it. We're, we're turning over every stone. And it's my hope that in the months, in the months to come, that we may be able to bring something forward to, to this board for that. But very few options and unfortunately fewer and fewer all the time. Yeah.
If I may, if I may also jump in, we've also worked with the school division. The City of Camp Leopitus to explore all of our options. So those relationships are certainly in the mix. There's just nothing, we haven't been able to come up with anything that would be suitable based on the size we need. Well, all we're looking for is an acre, but it's, the market out there is causing problems.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. With this pitch new South Library, is there a public consultation plan to go forward in the next little while? And just an urge, having lived through this once before, the sooner the better that, that the board has input from the public. And Director Samer, who's talking in my ear all the way from San Francisco, is saying essentially the same thing. I, I, it just comes in.
Thank you for your, your, your question. And it is listed as one of our recommendations that the board supports, that public engagement piece, which is ever so important, that would actually inform, you know, what we need in our building program and all of those very good things and, and size, location, et cetera, et cetera. Very, very difficult to market to individuals who have not had public library service, who haven't enjoyed public library service. And I think from my perspective, people when we look at one hundred percent of our cardholders here in Camloops, less than twenty-five percent are coming from the top of the hill. We know that because we have the data and we do track cards and postal codes and that sort of thing. So, so we really need an opportunity to be able to connect with people in a, in a strong way. So I think as we move through the presentation, I'll come up with a couple of thoughts and options. Thank you.
Director Hamer Jackson?
Yeah, I'm just wondering how many square feet do you feel that this one should be? Or would you be looking at a fourth one, you know, looking down the road in a different area?
Yeah, so that's a really great question. I think that, that we've got to be careful about not underbuilding our facilities. That if we're, if we're going to do it, we want to do it right. So our North Camloops Library is about twenty thousand square feet downstairs. We were at eighteen, we've dropped that by about thirty-five hundred square feet. Up the hill and what was envisaged, and I'll address this a little later on in the, the presentation as well, was to move that mobile library potentially up the hill. But I, I think that we can't relax. That's going to be my message to you, is that we can't relax. We have to, you know, if, if we satisfy and we're able to procure a site up at the top of the hill, we need to start looking towards the east and serving, serving the needs of, of that community as well. Those communities to the east of the downtown.
So I guess that, that's kind of my question down the road. Or for the next whatever twenty-five years, if you have enough square footage, are you going to be okay at three? Or do you feel that there should be four?
I think at some point, we're, as a city that's growing and given our demographics, I think, I think we're going to need to look at that fourth location, but we've had such a hard time getting to the third. So I, 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 I want to stay focused, but I, I appreciate your, your, your probing. And, and yes, it's a little bit leading, but I think that we need to, to plan and, and hopefully, you know, march along with, with, with the OCP for the city and its plans that we don't get caught behind. I think that, you know, we're in an unusual situation and that we do fall under the TNRD. Had we been a municipal library system, we might not be having this. Had we been a municipal library system, we might not be having this part of the presentation. True. Hey, so what we have done is we have filled the gap for for service up in in the southwest. We have two book drops in Aberdeen Mall, we've had one since two thousand and nine, and then we did add an additional one. Initially, that book drop, we saw that we needed to have it emptied once a week. Well, guess what? It has to be emptied three times a week, or we get calls from the mall that it's overflowing. We, when we launched the new mobile new mobile library back in twenty eighteen, we unpacked our west side stop, it was a bit of a heritage stop for us. And I think at that time, on Monday evenings, we were stopping there for four hours each and every Monday. That had been a service gap up in at the north of 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 Kamloops. But we were able to kind of crack the egg and introduce new stops here in Kamloops. So we've got the TCC, we've got Juniper, we've got the Wildlife Park, and we've got Sahaly. So one of our twenty eight, twenty twenty-three operational priorities that I'm working with my team on is to is to do a whole stops evaluation. So but we do know that with, you know, a new South Kamloops Library, there may not be the need for these stops. So what that would mean is to actually expand services, greater services to folks, folks outside of Kamloops. All right, so so what are these impacts? We are well positioned here with our downtown library, especially with the the change of location with library administration and discovery and support services. We now have the main floor, we continue to have the main floor for children's and and collections and our welcome desk and the adjacency to the cafe. And then half of the upstairs for collections and those two really important meeting rooms. So that we are there, we don't need to make further changes in the event of a a third Kamloops Library. So mentioned, just in terms of impact on the mobile library, certainly, you know, the opportunity to purpose build something for the this mobile library would be a bit of a dream come true. It's a it's it's a real challenge getting in and out of its its current garage. It has to back into a very busy corridor. And currently, we also use a bit of a notch out of some lands that are owned by a developer in order to to make that happen at the North Kamloops Library. So as mentioned, you know, we could expand our services using the mobile library once we have our third library up the hill.
Do you have the video available? You showed us a rather hair-raising video of the the mobile library trying to maneuver into that space. And it was, I think we were all sort of, oh, is it going to make it?
I definitely, I'll send it out, Jenny and I, when we're talking about the presentation, because she's been working side by side with me on on the facilities master plan. We debated it for the presentation, but we will send it out, Jiminy Cricket. Yeah, and you will enjoy it or not. So North Kamloops, you know, we kind of see these two two libraries, North Kamloops and South Kamloops, being roughly the same size in that twenty to twenty-five thousand square foot range. By moving the mobile library out of that back workroom area, we would be able to annex greater backroom space to increase the footprint, which I believe has been the plan all along, is to, you know, be able to increase footprint of that space. So. Great, so this slide is entitled Closing the Library Service Gap in Kamloops. So there are some interesting things that that we are are looking at. And that kind of circles back to Director Blackwell's comment, just in terms of engagement. And we've had some discussion with local grocery up the hill to install a vending machine and holds pickup, really to kind of create that presence and be able to engage with with residents regarding library services and offer that that convenient type of service. So this has been used by libraries across across North America. I'm sure many of you will have seen the holds lockers pop up, especially during the pandemic. I think about Home Depot, they were ones that really kind of promoted that so that people could independently come, pick up their purchases and then be able to make their way with their items. So likewise, holds pickup locker. So this is a fun slide. And once again, worked with Stephen Bushnell from BR2 Architects on on a concept for a library kiosk. So those images that you see at the top, they're they're from Korea. I I believe, you know, the Eastern Asian countries, very tight for space, looking looking to have high results and high yield within a very small footprint. So really taking inspiration from that, what we have here is, that's just a concept. I kind of like it, I keep looking at that one in the top right-hand corner myself, I like that one a lot, the transparency of it. But the the footprint there on the lower right and left really is is kind of like a matchbox. So if you think about those old fashioned matchboxes, where, you know, you could literally close the matchbox, close a library kiosk space and then be able to open it. So what we're kind of looking at is 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 a small footprint as a transitional opportunity to really close that service gap up the hill. So we're imagining sort of a fifteen square feet by seven square feet, something small, but something that we would program to ensure that we have maximum activity happening from that space. That ends my formal presentation.
Director Grigné, if anyone else has any questions or comments, Director Hotten, Director Rain, so, okay, whoa, okay. Slow down here, we've got Grigné, Hotten, Rain, other people, okay. Director Getz, I saw their hands, don't be shy now, O'Reilly? All right, Director Grigné, start us off, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Chief Librarian and staff, for a very enthusiastic presentation, one of the more entertaining ones since since I've been here. Do you have any sense of the capital and the operating costs associated with the third library? And I wonder if you could speak to that and how we would be able to fund that over the next five years?
Yeah, so I I would want to do a more thorough analysis. You know, I think very uncertain in terms of the capital costs for a build for the library. You know, we do talk about co-location. You know, I think ideally, we'd like to see our libraries all on one floor. That may not come to pass, we may need to look at something, you know, that might be two floors and adjust some of our expectations. But we kind of have to start with that that vision of of that twenty to twenty-five thousand square foot. I would not be able to be able to give you like a ballpark figure on what that would look like. And I would want to do an analysis on staffing and operational costs. And I would see that coming forward as kind of an omnibus when we get to the point where we actually have a a site under under recommendation for purchase. I would bring that forward then.
Thank you, and and so I'm wondering if part of this presentation should be a request that the board look at those costs before we wholeheartedly say we want to in the next five years build and operate a library. We have to understand what the capital costs are, the land costs, and then, of course, the operational cost. So I'm wondering if if part of this recommendation should be, I don't know, going to the one of the committees to to investigate that in detail. You know, if we're talking three hundred bucks a foot for a building, we're looking at a seventy-five, a seven and a half million dollar cost plus land. And those are pretty big numbers to digest. We ought to think about that, quite apart from the enthusiasm of having and the desire to have one, so, thank you.
CEO Hildebrand?
Thank you, if I could also just jump in a little bit too, to give a bit of our history. I know the the previous board, and many of you would know that, that were on the previous board, was the whole idea was that I was own the facility. So the idea of leasing is something that we may want to consider potentially going forward, given the cost of land right now. So that's just something I wanted to throw out there as well, that we we hadn't mentioned, that I just want to make sure that they they understood. And the direction from the previous board, as we started working through this and as we've gone through, as Judy mentioned, like upwards of fifteen properties, looking at them. The direction from the board was to go find the property, go find something that would make sense. And then that would come back to the board for a more in-depth analysis and understanding before that decision was made. So that was kind of the first step, just to provide some history.
Thank you, Director Hotten.
Thank you, Chair, and Judy, thanks a lot for the tour that you gave Director Grigné and myself at the North Council Library and Service Extender and all that kind of stuff. I did send you a note a while back. Is there, since the growth is in the southwest sector, could you foresee a stop at the Nutsford Community Hall? I know I sent you a a note once, I think that would catch the five A traffic and the upper Aberdeen traffic. It's, if you could foresee a stop there, I think I did talk to the residents in Nutsford and they seem very supportive, I know if you have a stop, you want people to use it, I understand that. But if you could fit that in, it'd be appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, Director Hotten, and I seem to recall that you were promising a a wiener roast as well. So it 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 definitely.
No, I'll upgrade it to Angus Burgers.
Oh, my, okay, well, so. Yeah. So we haven't made any changes to our mobile library stops, or we've just done a couple of little tweaks, nothing substantial since twenty eighteen. So staff operational priorities for our library, so myself, Melissa Lowenberg, Jenny Abramczyk, Margot Schiller, we are working on those mobile library stops and doing an analysis. So yours has been, your request has come into the mix of things as well. So I hope to be back sometime early fall and look at that. But there's there's quite a lot that goes into determining stop locations, distances, of course. Mike Brown and and his team, those guys are amazing, like they're down to like the five minute in terms of their stops. So so distances play into that population, of course, and 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 now hamburgers, apparently, so, thank you.
Director Rain?
Thank you, I must agree, very entertaining. And the enthusiasm comes across. I I do have serious concerns about the financial aspects. I just want to stop a little bit in a backup. Some of the information that was in the presentation that came to us showing Kamloops' growth, I think came from the Vancouver Sun article. But the population there was not based on Kamloops, it was based on Kamloops CMA Census Metropolitan area, which includes Sun Peaks, Tobiano, Sun Rivers. All all of those communities are part of that. In fact, Kamloops' growth isn't at ten percent, it's about eight, what's something? And I thought your number, that you showed for Kamloops' population, it was slightly different than what they were, I think the numbers are reversed, I think it's ninety-seven, nine oh two. The CMA is at fourteen, a hundred and fourteen. So some of the growth is definitely outside of the city of Kamloops, so make sure. Interestingly enough, then, there's a conclusion that the growth is in the southwest portion and Merritt. Interesting in Census Canada document, I saw Merritt's declining growth. It was fact, I think, the third fastest decline in the province. I think at one point, minus one point two, went from seven thousand one hundred thirty-nine to seven thousand fifty-one. So I'm just wondering whether, how we rationalize that Merritt is going to suddenly grow, no offense to Merritt, by the way. But I I and I truly appreciate the enthusiasm and the social aspects of library. In fact, I was very excited about the online innovation that you presented in the beginning. And I truly believe that that's the world we're living in. And in fact, libraries have, and I'm just reading internet stuff, and you shouldn't believe all of what you read on the internet, but libraries are struggling in some aspects and reinventing themselves to become much more than just a place to pick up a book. Because there's so much available online. In fact, you know, as a kid, everybody had to have an encyclopedia. Somebody came around and sold you a whole bunch of books, because that was the only place you could ever get some facts. Now, when I talk to my grandkids, I mean, they correct me every five minutes by going online, saying, Papa, that isn't what I see here, it says this. So the world today is online, and those are all exciting. And and I I support the principle of all of the recommendations, but when it comes to the third library, I have some grave reservations, and I'm going to get Director Grigné to build me my next building, because if he can build it three hundred dollars a square foot, I got a, I got a couple of contracts he can take on immediately. Costs today are six to seven hundred dollars a square foot. We're talking about a building that's fifteen to seventeen million bucks. We're talking about operating costs, if we just divide our present costs by two, five million a year, that's a twenty percent increase in our taxes, in what we have to requisition for taxes. We have to be careful, if 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 we can do innovative things online, if we can expand the service and make it more accessible, there may be a much better option than huge capital cost. I have to say, I liken the presentation to a guy that comes and he says, I got a hell of a good idea, I'm going to build a ski area. All right, here's where I'm going to build it, why would you build it there? I think a lot of people like to ski, you know, and skiing is growing all over the place. Look what's happening in Sun Peaks and Whistler. And say, have you looked at what's it going to cost to build there? Well, I haven't done the financials yet, but I I really think I should embark on this. Financials are important. I mean, if if this can't be supported by taxpayers, and quite frankly, we did a little survey. Our survey said, everybody wants more services, but they don't want to pay more money. You know, I think if we went, if we took this to a public referendum, in my opinion, it would get killed. Because the taxpayers can't take a seventeen million dollar building, nor can they take five million dollars in additional operating costs. I mean, we have to be realistic. I truly believe we're going to have to be much more innovative about how we make library services accessible. I'm not anti-library, in fact, my wife reads a book a week. I have a niece who works over in Kelowna in the system, been there most of her life. I mean, the the social aspects of what libraries can deliver, I agree with. Just saying, we have to be realistic. I don't think it is responsible for this board to say, travel on, buy the property, and then we'll figure out how the hell we run this and where the money's coming from. The financial aspects of this and a business plan. Have to accompany any approval by the board, in my opinion. And even if it's preliminary numbers, I mean, I. I appreciate, we don't know the exact numbers, but I pulled those out of the. Uh, out of the air, because I'm talking to developers and builders and. Uh, I mean, I know in Sun Peaks, eight hundred bucks a square foot. In Kamloops, probably six fifty, seven hundred. Uh, depending on the quality. I mean, those are. Realistic numbers. And then the other aspect of this, and I've heard this all along. Don't worry about the capital cost. We're we're gonna get a grant. Uh, some other level of government's gonna give us, you know, a. Ten or twelve million of the seventeen million we might need. And we'll only have to come up. We already got three million in the bank and the reserve account. Three or four mi- more million, and we got it. Uh, those are taxpayers' money a- all over the place. We still have to. Recognize that this is, this isn't money growing on trees. It's coming from taxpayers. And. Even if you get a library for free, there's still a five million dollar. Operating costs. So, uh, you know, I I really. Think it would be prudent for this board to. Say. Great with the plan. And let's put some numbers, not only to the this, but even to some of the other wonderful ideas. See all the. Technology coming, and the the looks great. I mean, I I support that, but I still want to see numbers. What does it cost for that computer system? What will it cost for all of these upgrades? I mean, costs have to come with this. I mean. I I I truly think, and I I disagreed with the board, the previous board, just so everybody knows. Uh, uh, saying, wh- where are the financial numbers? No, I know who, they come later. They they can come later if we're gonna make a a decision. That considers the taxpayers of this region, the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rain. Director Getz.
Thank you very much. Uh, I have a different view. Anyway, um. When I went to FCM, I went to the uh, study tour for the Greater Toronto Library. Uh, it was really eye-opening. Um. It's not your father's library anymore. The uh, they have different areas such as e-learning, where kids can go and code and build robots. They have a fabrication area where people can learn how to use sergers and uh, automatic quilters and all the rest of that kind of stuff. And then they have a three D printing room. As well as a media room, and uh, i- it's quite interesting. And in the teen area. It's a set of stairs that are about forty feet wide and about fifty feet high that go to absolutely nowhere, but for the teens to sit and read on. So. Was very impressed to see that. Uh, I'm the uh, liaison for the library in Merritt, and. If you've ever been to Merritt Library, uh, you've seen the Scale Model Railroad that is up on the roof. Which depicts uh, the railroad from um. Spencer's Bridge to Princeton. Uh, myself and four other gentlemen spent three and a half years along the Deborah Merritt Building that. And I spent two years of my life hanging off of a ladder on that. And most of the gentlemen that built that are gone. And uh, every, that thing runs three times a day. And it's run for the kids at storytime. And when the library train grows down. The call comes out to me, but being mayor, I've been fairly busy. And it was down for about a week, and I had two young gentlemen that were six years old at my office door wanting to know when I was gonna come and fix the train. So I got there. And let me tell you, if you think you've got problems with that, I'll such a. Deal with six-year-old kids that not have a train going around. So I got, I got there and I fixed it, and they were all waiting for me at the bottom of the ladder, and I got down. It was running around, and. Everybody goes, oh, thank you, thank you. And the one little kid says to me, how come it took you so long to get here? So anyway. Um, we, I really appreciate the libraries, and I have to agree with uh, Council Rain. We do need to see some numbers, but uh. I find them very important to our community. So thank you for your presentation and my keychain. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Director O'Reilly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just a couple of comments. Uh, first on the Kamloops Library, uh, that's in front of us here. Um, I think there's a a lot that's been thrown around, uh, a lot of numbers. It's a three hundred a square foot, eight hundred square foot. Are we gonna buy it? Are we gonna lease it? Is it twenty million dollars? Is it a referendum? These are all things that really we have no idea. Uh, what's been identified is that there is a shortage of library space uh, in the Kamloops area. And it's identified that whether there, whatever stats you read, uh, is that we know in our official community plan. Where the growth for the city is mapped out, our future growth and where it will be, and and that's what's going off of this. Um, and I think when something does come back to the board with options. Uh, operating costs and leasing costs or building costs will all be included. Uh, but what I, what I would like to see, or what I think would be prudent um, of the regional district to be looking at. Is I don't think you can look anywhere in the city that you see a new build that is only one floor. Land cost is too high to only do one building or one level. And we need to look at what else can be included, and whether that be a uh, housing above, which again, we are very short on housing. Um, whether that be integrated with Emergency Manager BC. As we know, we are the hub for the regional district where people come, and you talked about meeting spaces and office spaces, that is desperately needed. Um, and so looking at some form of partnership with them, and whether that's through government or private sector as well. But land cost is too expensive to have a standalone building. And that's something regardless of how we're gonna uh, pay for it, it's just not feasible. I I don't think it will be feasible. Um, and I'd just also like to just mention on the um, uh, the funding and how it's gonna be funded. And when we had learned at the previous board. Uh, a majority, if not, you know, over fifty percent, and please don't quote me on this, but a lot of it was funded from grants. And when we talk about grants being quote unquote, it's taxpayer money. Absolutely, it's taxpayer money. However, there are grants that are already allocated. With taxpayer dollars from the provincial and the federal government. That are going to be going to a city in British Columbia that are only gonna be allowed to use for libraries. And I think the Thompson Nicola Regional District should apply and try and get our portion of. The entire nation's tax dollars instead of going to another community like Prince George and Anymore, wherever that happens to be. Uh, it's not pulling uh, from, you know, other projects that we may want to do, whether that's a water treatment piece. Um, or road upgrades, whatever has to be. It's already allocated earmarked at provincial and federal levels for libraries, and I think we should be putting ourselves for. Uh, to get that funding. And I think that, and I hope that would be part of what comes forward. Outside of finding this location initially, is that these numbers will start uh, coming to us before, obviously, before any decision is made. Um, and and I hope that we can put our best foot forward to get the grants that are already allocated in the country for libraries. Um, so off of that, if if I can just ask, um, on uh, going to the North Shore Library, and this is outside. Of what's in front of us. Um, but we uh, are paying for a significant portion of a CSO. Officer um, at the North Shore Library, I believe, uh, to help there were safety issues and concerns of people. Not wanting to come to that library in person. And I don't think we've had an update since we approved that close to six or nine months ago, unless I was out of the room when you spoke about it. Um, but if you could just provide some form of update or Scott, uh, CEO of Hildebrand, um, I'd like to hear something on that, please. Thank you.
Sure, sure. I'll um, I'll start by um, commenting about the CSO program. Uh, so we worked with the City of Kamloops on bringing forward uh, Community Service Officer for the North Kamloops Library. Uh, that uh, CSO began in, I want to say, roughly August. Margot Schiller, who's our manager of Kamloops Libraries, is nodding her head. Uh, so we are going to be finalizing our pilot. So it was for a one-year pilot. And uh, in terms of our library operational priorities, we are going to be uh, writing a report on that. Um, both of our Kamloops locations, um. I dare say require security attention. Um, thus far, working with the Community Service Officer, we're very much aligned with um. Their philosophy of dealing with individuals who are, who are really in challenging situations. Um, and so, um, yeah, these last, these last months. Uh, that we've had the CSO at uh, North Kamloops have have been. I'd say a honeymoon period for 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 Margot, for her team. And um, yeah, we will be, you know, working with Byron McCorkle on finalizing a report. Um, regarding that particular initiative, but uh. It really, it came at a very critical time for us, and um, it's been a real positive. Thank you.
CEO Hildebrand?
Uh, thank you, Chair Roden, and to Director O'Reilly. Thank you for those comments. I think it's uh. It's something that we've talked about a lot. When you mentioned um. We need to think outside the box when it comes to a library. So we have talked to private developers about. A residential above. We've talked about daycare is being included. We talked about all those things. Um, but as the regional district. We're kind of running solo, so I would encourage our directors from the City of Kamloops to keep that in mind as as opportunities come up, because we're willing to look at that and bring that discussion back to this board, but we just don't have the. I have been poking the CAO David Trauwen and making sure that that's part of the conversation. And he's given me some leads, and we've been talking about it, but uh, maybe some political or some direct, the directors from the the city could help us in. Maybe finding a location that we could actually have a a lease space within a development that's gonna happen that would maybe fit the bill. Um, but just as an idea, I appreciate those comments, and it's something, it's just another, another opportunity to look at.
I have Directors Middleton and Blackwell.
Thank you. Question, um, we talk about leased spaces and whatnot, and. Uh, has there been, or do we continually have, say, eyeballs on? What's going on at Aberdeen Mall and whether or not if something sizable were to become available there? Um, would that be an option for us? Is that something that we would operate uh, out of if if space became available?
Thank you for your 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 comment regarding Aberdeen Mall. So that last image that we showed you was of a kiosk. Uh, that kiosk would provide us with a low-cost opportunity just to kind of get going with our our engagement processes. Um, we know that there's a wonderful marriage between libraries and shopping malls. I I harken from Edmonton. For those of you that are are familiar with the uh, Southgate Mall. Uh, there was a library that was in the libraries or in the mall's basement. Um, I believe that that mall changed hands a few times between Cambridge and Oxford, but. Nonetheless, it was a subterranean library space, um, terrible space. But it had the highest circulation per capita in Canada. So we know that there is, um, you know, a a a great relationship, but we know that it comes at a cost. And so that, that will have to factor into our thinking about that third Kamloops Library. Uh, just at the end of a twenty-year lease. Um, you know, what would we own? So to date, we have owned our buildings, and it's enabled us to cost control. Um, where, you know, at the end of a a longer-term lease, and if we are going into a bigger space, we would. We would want to do that for for pricing, but um, after that fact, we can't cost control. So it's. You know, I I think it's it's where we want to be, um, is is in that kind of civic hub. And malls are are a great destination, you know, eliminates the need for, you know, security personnel and. CSO was because that's looked after, and, you know, lots of uh, various facilities uh, requirements also. But um, at any rate, thank you for your comment.
Director Blackwell?
Yeah, just a different perspective, but first to echo everything that Director O'Reilly said. Absolutely, um, we need to know some costs. Um, as somebody grew up in relative poverty, uh, I spent a lot of my life in libraries. Uh, including Simon Fraser, where my mother worked. Um, libraries are the great equalizer, because they're the one thing you can do in a city. Um, that does not suck money out of your wallet while you're doing it here. The only other one is parks in cities generally. Um, so I am fully in support, even though I probably, my, the district of Clearwater and and our citizens of the valley would probably. Use it less than anything, um, as far as a physical space. It would, it is one of these places that gives you the opportunity to come into the town, hang out, give a place for your kids to check things out in the big picture. Um, and experience things without it being. A consumption game of dragging them around the mall and and uh, three hours later, there's two hundred and fifty dollars in your pocket. It gives you that time to be here, experience city life, and not drain your wallet. So that's one reason I definitely support this.
Thank you, Director Rain. You have a supplemental?
Yeah, yeah, just um, one question. Is there any possibility of working with TRU? On their library. Location up there. And I mean, I I was thinking when you made the presentation for Ashcroft. You know, the, one of the reasons why you can do a simple extended hours with no supervision is that. The the patrons of the library are pretty responsible people. Uh, and I would think that. Uh, that location would be easily accessible and. Uh, they're responsible people. Uh, in the whole university environment. I- is there any possibility of working with them, especially I noted that Kelowna. Does have a library uh, at the university.
Yeah, so thanks, thanks for your comment, Director Rain. Um. You know, the the idea of libraries, you know, embedding themselves, public library service and and post-secondary isn't a novel idea. I actually. Worked on a project that saw one of the Edmonton Public Library satellites at the Cameron Library at the University of Alberta. Um. The challenge, the challenge with that and with many of those academic libraries is that they're embedded within those academic buildings. And the public does not see it as their library. So what happened with Cameron Library and that satellite? Um, faculty loved it. Some of the students, although. Most of the students were too, too, too busy with their studies and whatnot, not prioritizing public library use. So in the end, uh, it 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 did, um. It did close. So, um, you know, we, I believe, you know, and 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 looking at various sites. Uh, that one of the sites that had come forward. Was at at TRU, but a standalone site, not embedded within the campus itself. So, um. Yeah, were that to be a possibility, I think, you know, how fantastic. And I think this, this notion of co-locating. Um, you know, is is very strong. I think we've got a great example at the North Kamloops Library with residential up ahead, up above, you know. Life Labs, a couple of doors down, uh, and various other amenities. So I think to your point, um. Yeah, we we're we're looking at partnerships. Um, I have had nonprofits um, have conversation with me just in terms of of uh. Um, you know, working together. Unfortunately, they're not able to bring anything to the table. So, um. At any rate, we're gonna continue to to do our due diligence and and work towards this, but. I uh, I was sorely tempted when I was putting this slideshow together to depict a salmon. Swimming upstream, because that's what it's felt like for, for this uh, this particular uh, initiative of ours. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, um, Director Rain made the interesting point that the world is online, and for many people it undoubtedly is. For a lot of people, particularly in small towns, it is not online. Uh, they they, network connections are terrible. They're not computer literate. They don't. Want to read books on screen. That is something I hear time. My husband loves his Kindle. He would not, you'd have to pry it out of his cold, dead hands. I do enough reading on screens that when I read a book, I want to read a book. Uh, you have things like the yarn and yap sessions, which are phenomenally popular in our libraries. You have the uh, one-on-one tech uh, things where people can go in and learn how to use their particular device if they want to, or get questions answered. And. Yes, there's someone in our town who you can pay to have that service done, but. Comes back to Director Blackwell's point that this is a way to do it without draining your wallet. Libraries are marvelously inclusive spaces. They're safe spaces, which is increasingly important, sadly, in our world. And and just people like the sense of community of going to a library. So you don't get that online. And and I know that the facilities, I've used the facilities online through the TNRL website. They are absolutely fantastic. People love them. But they are no substitute for going into an actual bricks-and-order library with a group of other people to do something together, or just to sit. And relax. Uh, I heard of a student, he's actually, he's a university student now. He works in Ashcroft. He went over to the library on his lunch hour just to do some quiet studying. Um, for a lot of our students, that's one of the reasons I'm so excited about the Service Extender. A lot of our students sadly do not have home lives that are conducive. To study in a. Safe. And welcoming environment. And so the library is a place during the Service Extender hours where they can go and do that. So, anyway, that's just my two cents about libraries. I will talk about them till the cows come home, but I won't. Instead, I will note that we have some recommendations here, and we have four recommendations. Instead, I will note that we have some recommendations here and we have four recommendations. And the first is to adopt the revised facilities master plan. Foundation for a future twenty twenty-three, which I'm assuming everyone here has a recommendation. Thank you, Director Blackwell. Second by Director Getz. Questions on the facilities master plan or this recommendation. Director Grenier.
I would like to propose an amendment to the first one and change the word adopt to receive. Uh I'd also like to propose uh an amendment for number two, which we haven't got to yet, but it's related to the idea of receive. And that would be number two to change to something like prepare. Prepare a capital and operating budget for consideration by the board. Uh to uh support the proposed amendment to receive the facilities master plan.
Okay, I think we should wait for number two till we get there. Um corporate officer Campbell would receive the revised facilities master plan. Is that going to affect? Anything materially?
Through the chair to Director Grenier, um I'm going to defer to Judy because my my understanding is that this this plan is um. Is a document that does need to be adopted and formally approved by the Board of Directors, so to receive it is sort of a meaningless um. Uh motion, so I would suggest that it remain a adopted or approved, like the the board needs to put their rubber stamp on this and receiving um wouldn't um. Wouldn't achieve that.
Because we have all effectively received it by getting an agenda and 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 reading it. All right, so actually, so Director Grigny has proposed an amendment that we uh substitute the word receive for adopt. Does that proposed amendment have a seconder? Seeing none, that is defeated, so the motion before us is to adopt the revised facilities master plan. Any further discussion? Director Rain?
Yeah, I I I I truly believe we need to put a financial plan together. If I knew. I would support this motion if I knew there was a financial plan that would be coming in the next six months or some time period. Just going into the vague future. That it's coming sometime. After we get a property or when we have further ideas. I I really can't support it at this point.
Thank you, Director Sam.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Um for my understanding, uh I would like um staffs um. Inputs on whether or not I'm wrapping my head around this analogy correctly. So this facilities master plan is similar to like uh an official community plan. Where official community plans, we don't have exact numbers, we just have a direction. So in that sense, we also approve O C Ps without. Uh numbers and budget and such is that is that kind of a same analogy?
I. I would think that's a good analogy um for staff to, you know, determine operational priorities. This is a an important document. Um but generally, we don't bring our operational priorities to the board, so as I've kind of outlined, our next priority being Clearwater. North Kamloops behind that, um it doesn't go to the board for a decision. Um and I'd like to also um let you know that um I brought this forward as an update. I didn't want to bring you the twenty twenty, so we did some revisions. We wanted to speak to what had happened in those three years since the board had. Uh adopted that facilities master plan, so this is the twenty twenty-three, so the previous board did. Um adopt uh the twenty twenty uh facilities master plans, and this is. Um kind of rule of thumb in in any bigger library system to have a master facilities plan.
And did you have a supplemental, Director Sam? Uh Director Getz.
Um all of those of us who've sat through O C Ps know that O C Ps are a fairly wish document. Not every single thing happens in an O C P. So and an O C P can be revised or changed as you move along, so um I I I'll support this. I I have no problems with uh supporting it the way it is.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call the question uh on the recommendation. All those in favor? Opposed? We have directors Ranta, Grenier and Rain. And and Hayward and Hotten. The motion passes. We move on to number two, direct staff to continue to pursue site and development options for the establishment of a third. Library in Kamloops in the city's southwest. Uh and seconded, thank you, Director Stanky. Director O'Reilly, were you the mover of that? Thank you very much. And Director Grenier.
I'd like to propose an amendment to number two uh to uh direct staff to. Prepare a capital and operating budget for consideration by the board.
Would that be an amendment or would that more properly be a separate recommendation?
I'd be I'd be happy with either, but I think this issue, this discussion about capital. And budget and specific numbers needs to be addressed.
Through the chair to Director Grenier and the rest of the board. Um so typically, an amendment should be uh tied and related to the the motion, so. Potentially that that could be so um direct staff to continue to pursue site development options for the establishment of a third library. In Kamloops in the city southwest and direct staff to prepare an operating budget for this. I guess my only concern is that the operating budget would really not just be um tied to the site and the development. It would be tied to um like the ongoing operations of an actual uh building. So I I will leave it with Director Grenier um in terms of whether he may want to propose a separate motion that's a bit more fulsome in terms of having staff come back with a. An operating budget, not only related to the purchase or lease of a site, but also the operating costs of a of a third library.
Director Grenier.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Um my concern is that this is uh directing staff. To pursue development options, but we don't have a capital plan. So how do you pursue development options without a capital plan? And how do we explain it to our constituents? That we're asking them to go out and look for something, but we don't know how much it's going to cost. So I think that the idea of. Pursuing a development option has to be tied to uh a capital plan, one that's been approved. So if if a separate amendment is appropriate, or if I'm adding to this one to tie. Capital plan to developmental options. I'm hi- I'm happy with either one, but I think it probably should be an amendment to number two, if if that's important to this board.
All right, so Director Grenier is proposing an amendment, so the. Motion would read, uh correct me if I'm wrong here, direct staff to continue to pursue site and development options for the establishment of a third library in Kamloops in the city southwest. At the same same time that staff pursues. A capital or develops a capital plan, corporate officer.
Through the chair, we'll just deal with the amendment um first, not the entire motion is amended, so it would be that um. Uh staff are directed to prepare an operating and capital budget and plan.
So Director Grenier has made that amendment. Does it have a secondaire? Director Bass seconds it, thank you. Discussion on the amendment. Director O'Reilly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh I don't know, going back to how this is included or not included, but. I would definitely be supporting this if it was a separate standalone motion, I think tying them together. They are two different things, but you can't have. One without the other and you have to have both as as I think you're have uh articulated that well. Um but I would think it should be a standalone motion um on that and I just don't know. What the value would be with having them tied together and if it actually would water water down one over another. Um I don't know, I I put that out just to staff maybe to answer.
C E O Hildebrand.
Uh thank you, I can just provide a perspective through you, Chair Roden. Um I would agree with Director O'Reilly, it's um. We don't know what those options are yet, so in in order to do that. I I think we number two could stand alone, but I would also agree that that one could be a standalone motion as well. Because those options could include a lease space, it could include land, it could include so many different things, we'd be coming with all these. Potential budgets and operating plans, but really not know what those options are yet, as we're still. As you've heard, gone through like fifteen different options and ideas and work for the city and the school division, we don't have anything concrete yet. So I guess what I'd be concerned with is, I guess, does the board support us continuing to work towards looking for opportunities and options? Um and then in the same in the same breath, making sure that we have an appropriate budget and um. And um budget appropriate to the project that we're looking at.
Thank you, Director Grenier.
Thank you for that. I don't have a problem before we vote on pursuing another plan to vote to say develop a capital plan. And then after we have a capital plan, we can vote to say pursue something. But my my concern is that we're not giving direction uh to staff. We're asking staff to come back with something, and I think that that that's a fair thing to do, but I think that we need to understand whether it's three hundred dollars a foot, six hundred dollars a foot. A thousand dollars a foot, we have to understand what it is we're trying to accomplish before we say go out and pursue a site. And 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 I just, I'm just, I had to vote against the first one because I'm not comfortable adopting the plan. I support libraries as. As as Director Rain does, but not to the extent of that plan, so I voted against that and I'd have to vote against. The second one unless I see that we have a commitment to a capital plan. That's my concern.
Director O'Reilly.
This is fun. I enjoy this. Uh no, and and I guess to put it back, so. If say we had a capital plan and we approved, let's just say fifteen million dollars. And then, okay, they came back and said, well, for fifteen million dollars in this site, we can build you a four hundred square foot library. That that doesn't work. I think we have to have, as as mentioned, I think it uh started with thirty sites. Uh initially going back two or three years ago and have slowly whittled the the list down. Um but to be actively looking for a site and then come back with. Options to fund that site and what that's going to look like. We really have no idea again whether we're gonna. Whether we're gonna own it or build it or purchase a strata unit like we had done here, uh whether we're gonna lease it. Um but that will all have a direct impact on a financial plan, so you can't have a financial plan without. An idea of how many square feet lease, whatever it happens to be.
Okay, uh Director Thorpe and then Director Grenier.
Sorry, I actually agree with uh Director O'Reilly. If you read this really carefully, it says. Direct staff to continue to pursue site and development options for this establishment. So we're still in the option stage and until we figure out what our options are, I don't think we can look at. How many dollars? We need to have a more concrete plan before we can look at the dollars. Right now, we're still looking at options. That's my opinion. Thanks.
I've got Director Grenier, uh presumably the supplemental director gets Director Hamer Jackson, and then remember we are discussing the amendment. And I'm going to call the question on the amendment, so Director Grenier gets and Hamer Jackson.
Thank you. Um I understand. Uh I think that if we're out pursuing options, it's good to be able to know whether it's fifteen million or thirty million dollars. Because one of the options would be to talk to developers and say, would you like to build this facility as part of your? Uh proposal for a subdivision or a redeveloped shopping mall or what have you. But if we don't have a number in mind, whether it's seven and a half, fifteen or thirty, how do you? Really pursue that option? Somebody might offer you land for free, but. Uh you know, we're trying to achieve building a building. And we need to understand ourselves what that cost of that will be, and then we can pursue. Uh people funding it, donating it. Part uh participating at seeking capital costs. That's that's my issue. I would be happy to make it a standalone separate amendment, but. Uh I every time I've made a separate amendment, it has to go back to another period or whatever. If it can be made today. I would like the second one or insert one A uh uh capital plan be prepared by the staff. Then I could support number two. That's my position on that. Thank you.
Uh Director Getz.
I won't be supporting the amendment. One of the reasons is because uh. This we're having the same issue in my community for a new arena. I can't go ahead to the community and give them a price breakdown until I have the land because I have no idea how big the land is going to be to build on it, so. Until the land prices, uh the the land area is nailed down, uh I don't I don't I don't see us going further than uh the option point, so I won't support this amendment.
Director Hamer Jackson?
Yeah, I'm just wondering uh with the amendment and and everything else, um all these recommendations, um. Um won't that won't that get us to where we're going for what we've been talking about for the last half an hour? Like these recommendations, what we've been talking about, these recommendations. Um aren't they gonna get us to what we've been talking about for the last half hours? Just what I'm asking.
Uh Ms. Moore?
Thank you, uh Director Hammer Jackson. I think that it's the culmination of all of these things, you're you're correct. That will bring us to the board. To determine the cost and put before the board a capital plan. Um if I if I omitted or uh to to let you know, we do have monies that have been set aside in terms of capital pro- to procure a site. Uh whether or not that's enough, it's, you know, we're very uncertain, but I think there's so many different permutations and combinations that will hopefully, you know. Something will come forward where, you know, uh we can, you know. Develop that that capital plan, bring it back to the board for decision, but at this point, from my perspective. It's a motion to direct staff to continue pursuing development and site options.
Thank you.
Uh Director Sarai, you have something to say on the proposed amendment?
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Um I'm struggling with it as well and I won't be supporting the amendment. I I think. What we're uh if the amendment goes through, what we're uh doing is handcuffing our staff. To look at sites that they're not even capable of knowing if it's going to be funded or not. So I think the way I'm reading it is let them go and see options, whether it's lease, rental, partnership. And then come back to us and say, this is what we found, there's, we've went from thirty sites to limited down now, it might even. Come back to three or four of different options and then we will determine a business case plan for each one of them. What's going to fit and what we're comfortable with, so I think the way the recommendations are worded now. And like Director Hammer Jackson said. If if we adopt all four, everything we're asking for is in all of the options. It should be coming back to us before we say yes.
And uh Director Middleton.
Uh I can't support the uh the amendment. I agree that number two standing as an option. So we we should go, I think we're getting way too far into the weeds on on this and on how we would even move forward, so. Uh I think that if we start to uh in essence sort of boondoggle the whole thing. With a whole pile of extra lingo and requirements before we can move forward would uh. Put too much of a burden on staff and uh board and everything, so I don't support the amendment. I think uh I would support number two. As um presented, thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. I'm going to call a question on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hands. We have Director Bass, Director Grenier. And Director Rain and Director Morris. And all those opposed to the amendment. Thank you. The amendment is defeated, so we go back to the recommendation number two, direct staff to continue to pursue site and development options for the establishment of a third library in Kamloops. That has been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion on this? Director O'Reilly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um and the only last comment I'll say regarding uh the next uh three recommendations, two, three and four. Is these now uh have a direct correlation with one that we just adopted. Um and and that is to adopt the new facilities uh plan that was was put across to us, so there is a direct correlation now with what this board has adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no any, no more questions or comments on number two, then we will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed, if any, we have Director Grenier, Director Rain, Director Morris. The motion is carried. Item number three, direct staff to continue to pursue major capital funding opportunities.
Move three.
Director Blackwell moves, seconded by Director Gets. Are there any comments, questions on this? No. Seeing no hands in the air, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Seeing no hands in the air. I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, if any. Uh, it looks like it's carried unanimously. And number four, direct staff to develop and deliver a public consultation and engagement strategy for Third Kamloops Library. So moved, who moved it? Director Gatz, seconded by Director Stanky. Thank you. Any questions or comments on this? No hands in the air. I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, if any, that is carried. All right. I think it's time for a break. Very short one. Thank you very much for your presentation, Ms. Moore and the library staff.
Thank you. Thank you for the time. It was a pleasure coming to the board.
And thank you for my keychain. Another keychain, another keychain. All right, everyone, or as someone just said, we have to go back to work. So we have regional and community parks. We have a report from General Manager of Operations Jamie Vera and Manager of Community and Emergency Services Kevin Skretnik. Take it away, gentlemen.
Batteries. Oh, oh, we're live. It's not green. Everyone could hear? Yes, yes. Okay. Thanks, everyone. This presentation is going to be fairly short. Really what we're trying to do here this morning is to start, and I'm stressing start, a discussion around our where we're going with our both a regional and community park service. So I've had a number of discussions with many of you, many of the new board members on this board as one offs about community parks in their area or about concepts for destination parks and trails. And there also was a lot of discussion at a strategic planning session, both the preliminary strategic planning session that happened just with the EA directors and then subsequent a planning session with the whole board. And a theme that kept coming up was around economic development, but a lot of the comments I heard about economic development were related to this outdoor recreation destination kind of tourism and parks and trails and infrastructure that fit into that. So before we get into this discussion, I'm gonna turn over to Kevin to just give a fairly brief kind of overview background of what our existing parks, infrastructure and program is. For those electoral area directors, this may be a bit of a repeat of what you heard at our last EA director's meeting. But I'll pass it over to Kevin to take it away from there.
Good morning, folks. As Jamie said, Kevin Skrapnik, Manager of Community and Emergency Services. I think it's it's appropriate that we're having this discussion on the heels of the discourse around the the libraries. In sociology, there's a concept of the third place. So there's there's the home, there's the workplace, and then there's the the third place, which is kind of that low barrier place where where, you know, community and sense of self is built. And I think a lot of what you can talk about the benefits of libraries apply to those parks as well. So in TNRD, we have essentially two different designations for the parks that we maintain. And I'll speak to a third kind of now defunct approach that we no longer use. So there is the electoral area parks or community parks, and we'll delve into those a little bit more further in a future slide here, but the long and short of it is these parks are funded by an electoral area through taxation, and it is the entire electoral area paying into the funding for that park. Or a combination of electoral areas, and I'll show some examples of that later on here. There's well over a dozen of these throughout the TNRD, and there's there's definitely a wide spectrum of services and facilities and uses for those those parks and spaces. And then all of our electoral areas do actually have an existing park service established. Not all of them are utilized, though. So again, you'll see that in terms of the the breakdown. So there there is a service establishment on the books, but they just haven't necessarily been been utilized. Now, this is in comparison to our regional park service, and these are funded by the entire regional district. And on the basis of these being, you know, regional wide venues. And part of what Jamie is going to get into in terms of our strategy is how we actually kind of flesh out and delineate this a little bit better. So as it stands right now, the three regional parks or regional park services that we have is Barrier Forks Park, Little Hell's Gate, as well as the South Thompson River Boy system. So again, not what you traditionally think of as a park, but certainly a kind of a recreational focused service.
Just just a question, Mr. Skrapnik, where is Little Hell's Gate?
Little Hell's Gate is between Vol and Blue River, just off Highway five, and it's a pretty spectacular viewpoint over the over the North Thompson River. Yeah. Now, the third designation, and we no longer have any of these in TNRD, was a specified area park service. So this was a park that was paid for and established through the traditional service establishment process, but there was a specified area. So it was not the entire electoral area paying into it. There was a geographic line put on a map. Folks within that line were paying towards the park. Folks who were out of it were not. We have moved away from that where we're now doing it at the electoral area level. So this is Little Hell's Gate Park here in Area B, as Chair Roden was asking about. So again, this is a regional park. Being right off Highway five, this is a fairly popular tourism, not necessarily a destination, but certainly a stopover point for folks who are traveling the Highway five corridor. Smith Pioneer Park, this is in Lower Nicola. Now, this is an example. This is a electoral area or a community park, but it is actually jointly funded both by Directors Laird and Graham. This park is in Area M, but certainly straddles the border between the two, and there's lots of intermix. So they both fund this, and we do have some pretty exciting new facilities going into Smith Pioneer this year that we'll we'll talk about a little bit later here. And then, as I mentioned before, the South Thompson River Boys as well. So this is the system going from essentially the mouth of the South Thompson at Chase out to the outlet into Kamloops Lake, west of west of town here. So a list of our community parks, I won't go through them extensively, but just kind of point out, you will notice the the vast majority of these are in the North Thompson. And a big part of that is these are kind of legacy assets the TNRD holds from prior to the District of Clearwater and the District of Barrier existing. So when the TNRD was the only level of government in the North Thompson, we had facilities both within what are now the municipalities of Clearwater and Barrier, as well as in what are now in the electoral areas. So that's why there's a bit of a bit of unevenness in terms of where these are. And again, you'll see in terms of what is kind of at these parks also covers a wide spectrum. So at Egghead Bay, for instance, it is essentially a boat launch with a bathroom facility there. It's not a kind of traditional park versus, for instance, Ferry Road and Blackpool, which has a playground, established washrooms, and also has a boat launch there. And then we look at examples like Keek Willie Park, which is just east of Kamloops here in Del Oro, just outside the city boundaries on the Lafarge side there. That's a beautiful green space without a whole lot of services versus at Pritchard Beach right now, we don't have a park there, but we do have tenure on an MOTI right of way where we've got a bathroom and garbage cans set up adjacent to some crown land that's used quite extensively recreationally. So this year, we do have some some grand openings coming. So we've got next weekend, Latchmere Park in Little Fort. Very exciting. A lot of work has been happening there, both at the park and with the adjacent community hall and fire hall. The grand opening there is going to be two Saturdays from now. The Blue River Pedestrian Bridge Grand Opening, which I believe is being planned to be in conjunction with the out of town board meeting occurring in Blue River in August. That's also an exciting project coming to fruition here. And then we are also looking, I had mentioned the new facilities going into Lower Nicolet, Smith Pioneer. So we do have a happy to say a fully accessible benchell facility under construction right now. The grand opening for it is going to be in conjunction with Garlic Fest in September in Lower Nicola. But we're already seeing folks looking to book the facility. There's a lot of excitement in the community around it. So full credit to our two intrepid community service coordinators, Joe Kang and Sherry Madden, who do the absolute lion's share of the work on this file, and a lot of the work they do kind of speaks to the success we're seeing out there. So I think with that, Jamie, you'll take over and talk about sort of the vision going forward.
All right. Thanks, Kevin. So what what is our plan? And when I say what is our plan, I'm speaking from kind of this the board level. You know, you're seeing Kevin talk about these individual parks, but how do they fit into a bigger plan? What we're doing regionally and direction for the board around our parks development.
If I if I may, I think you have to either speak very close, stand very close to the microphone, or it needs new batteries, because if you stand, it's it's waiting for the weekend.
It's it's had a hard hard week. Yeah, that's much better, isn't it? All right. So what is our plan? Well, we don't have a plan. And that's what I wanted to talk about today. So we have no real specific mandate or the board regarding a regional approach to park development. So what we've been doing predominantly, the the parks that we have, as Kevin mentioned, the majority of those are electoral area parks. So we do work with the electoral area directors, we'll do community consultation. So I don't want to make it sound like we just do whatever we want. But it is, it has evolved into this piecemeal approach to park development in specific electoral areas that either have them historically, or there's a desire from the community. To say it a different way, our parks program has been reactionary. When there's a want from the public or a need or led by an area director or community group, then we've responded and sort of developed based on that, or at least looked into development based on on that interest. So but going back to our strategic planning session, and there being a lot of discussion and ideas, concepts around, you know, destination trails and destination outdoor recreational opportunities, that's more than just a community playground that a specific area wants. We're talking about bigger picture destination type stuff. Kevin mentioned the the regional parks program. So we do already have a mechanism, a service established for parks that are funded by all electoral areas and all municipalities within that. Currently, that program is, the budget is around $100,000, a fairly low budget, just to maintain that existing those existing three parks that were established as regional parks over 20 years ago, and there's been no change. And as far as I know, no real discussion or direction on the regional parks program since that time. I was actually, I have to admit, when I was preparing for this, I was looking into our, I did, I thought we didn't have any policy around regional parks. Apparently, we do have a policy back from 2005, and it's a one page policy that is very simple and straightforward, but the the key highlight from the board at the time who adopted this policy, which obviously is still directing us, is that the direction was to keep operational maintenance costs associated with these functions either nonexistent or minimal. So I think that explains, looking back on the history, of why we haven't moved forward with any sort of development. And I'm not here to sell anything or say that we should change direction, but I want to be clear with this board that that's the current direction that we have. So when all these great ideas came up at strategic planning, and I agreed with a lot of them, we're not moving forward on any of those unless we get some clear direction of the board to change off of off of this policy. So what I wanted to share, just to before we move into discussion, just to kind of get some of these kind of creative juices flowing and to throw out some ideas that I've been hearing from some of you around this table and community members needs in communities for things like beaches and boat launches. We have a few in the community. Here's an example of the Village of Chase has a very busy and well well run, well maintained boat launch on the Shushrop, but I know water access is an issue as in lack of it, and there's a lot of lakes that there's public that wish there was public access points to those lakes. That's a some would argue a lost tourism opportunity when there is no public access. I would say I know some people, though, who live, or I've heard from people who live on such lakes that would probably be happy to keep no public access, but that's a different long story. But from a tourism point of view, definitely public access is key. Destination trail routes, obviously, this isn't the TNRD. This is the part of the famous Myra Canyon train trestle, which is, you know, attracting hundreds per day, if not thousands per day at the peak season. Very accessible and especially now with the the new popularity and technology advances in e-bikes. These trails are getting more and more busy. Campgrounds. Campgrounds is another thing. So the TNRD, we don't own or operate any campgrounds, but other regional districts and local governments, many municipalities own and operate campgrounds, and maybe many of the the board members around this table who are involved in those can speak to it from their perspective, but I think there's a number of reasons that happened. This photo here is from the Yard Creek Campground in in the Columbia Shushrop Regional District. And my understanding is that one of the main driver, the the initial driver for having this developing a campground there was having issues of tourism tourists actually being stranded on the highway, trying to get you know, across the country, across the province, and having nowhere to camp because all the the campgrounds were full. So obviously, it's also a way to get people into your community and to stay in your community when those are available. So I know many of the municipalities, Logan Lakes is an example, where they have a campground right in their community, right on their golf course, right on their lake, right at the head of their bike and equestrian and cross country ski trails. Mountain bike trail networks. This, you know, sport has exploded in the last decade. This photo is from a real success story. This is from the Vailmont Mountain Bike Park, so just north of our border. This mountain bike park did not exist, I think, seven years ago, only six or seven years ago, they put in their first trail. And now it's the same caliber to mountain bike parks in places like Silver Star and Sun Peaks. They don't have a chairlift there. Their model is still shuttled, shuttling up the trails or pedaling up. But the amount of, I I've been there on the weekends in the summer, and the amount of tourists there directly from Alberta, because this is the closest mountain bike destination from that Edmonton corridor is huge. And it's been a huge boost to that economy and definitely to their local brewery that opened, I think, about the same time that these mountain bike trails started. So again, I'm just putting those out there for for thought and discussion. And now I purposely didn't put a recommendation on on this agenda item, but I just wanted to pose this as a question. Because again, we're not trying to to sell it, but I want this board to discuss and give us direction if they want us to move forward. So really, the question is, should the TNRD create a parks and trails strategy? So we're not going down the, you know, the detail of what kind of what kind of parks we should establish or trails we should establish where. But should we, should we, first step from a staff point of view, start going down this road investigating what a strategy would even look like? And is this something the board is interested in us pursuing? So just in the last couple of minutes, I just going to kind of lay out what my vision of what that strategy would look like, what what type of things would be included in a strategy? So we evaluate the existing parks and trail assets in the system. And and with that, I mentioned that we have a number of undeveloped properties, some which are designated as parks. So when a subdivision occurs, especially historically, and when subdivisions occurred, there was designation of land that was parks. Now it's switched to, it could be either land given to the regional district as parkland or in kind or not in kind, sorry, or cash donation instead. So we have a number of park properties that are technically TNRD park designated land that aren't actually operated as parks, and we don't budget for and operate as parks. They're just vacant land out there in some of these old subdivisions. We also own other properties that have the potential. There's actually a number of properties that we purchased as part of our solid waste management plan, where we develop eco depots, and the land that we purchased was far in excess of the actual land needed for developing the eco depot, for example. So I think of the the new Boston Flats Eco Depot in Cache Creek. There is a giant mountainside on the upstream part of the Bonaparte River, and actually, old Hayfield land along the Bonaparte River below the Eco Depot and up the following hillside that we actually own as the TNRD. We purchased, I think it was a 200 and something acre parcel, and we're only using about five acres as the Eco Depot. We also want to clearly designate our existing parks. So what should be a community park versus a regional park? So I think the strategy would have to clearly identify that and maybe through policy, adopt definitions of those. You know, my vision for that would be that the regional park, obviously funded by all municipalities and electoral area, are those parks that are truly destinations, economic development drivers as a region. Community parks are the more traditional parks, playgrounds, swing sets, the baseball diamonds for specific community, more intended for for residents. Strategy would identify opportunities and need for future development. So this is when we get the key, we we get to the point of, okay, what do we do next? What opportunities are out there? Strategy would identify opportunities and need for future development. So this is when we get the key, eh, we we get to the point of, okay, what do we do next? What opportunities are out there? Are there new pa- i- is it new conventional parks we're looking at, destination trails, or other type of outdoor recreation in- infrastructure? Uh, now that another key piece of this is eh eh and that I would see included in the strategy was inventorying and and understanding the existing parks and trails that are out there, and these are ones that are non-TNRD. So um, we wouldn't be reinventing the wheel here. There's a lot of community groups out there that are operating with parks, trail systems, other outdoor recreation things uh that are well utilized, and so the strategy would include them in this. And and following up on that, we'd be investigating partnership opportunities with those existing groups that are managing these. Uh, is there, you know, one of the ideas is it could be a grant and aid type scenario, whereas part of a, for example, a regional parks budget that we fund through grant and aid ongoing um operations or a portion of operations for some of these uh societies that are operating these, I think of um, a number of the cross-country ski clubs, uh, all of the ones within the TNRD are nonprofit societies funded, fully reliant on, you know, grant contributions and their their member dues. So the strategy would would ultimately then kind of prioritize projects and and identify funding opportunities. So a project list is great, where's the money going to come from? And and what what avenues are we going to look at for those for those projects? So then finally, wh- what what's the process of doing all this? Um, so step one, if this um eh eh board wants us to pursue it, I would see is us going into a deeper dive into this from a staff perspective and actually come up with a detailed staff report. So this is no cost and and to clarify, there's no budget currently allocated for for a park strategy. But the detailed staff report would be looking at, you know, more of a clear process and timeline for what a park strategy is and what it would look like. Where the funding is going to come from to actually go through this process to create a strategy, how it would be funded. It could even, I, you know, we could at least propose sort of a preliminary project list eh from a staff point of view. And look at that policy of defining what we see as regional versus community parks. Um, and then ultimately, it'd be up to the board with that report then to determine if they want to allocate any funding or resources to move forward with the park strategy, and then we would include that into the following year's budget. So then, if that went forward, step two would actually be the development of the park strategy. Now, this would be not a not a simple or easy task. So this is when we're talking about the consultation with all of those stakeholders, those existing users and and community groups running parks and trails, um consulting with residents at large, consulting with municipalities and First Nations throughout the region. Um, eh eh I see focus groups created, maybe even a uh a subcommittee of this board to to work through that. And then ultimately, the board would adopt a strategy and allocate ongoing resources for implementation of what that strategy would be. And step three would be implementation. So having a long-term plan and start moving forward with it. So that's the concept, that's the idea. I'm going to open up for questions and discussion and just to to kind of close out the presentation that that if if um this this board wants us to, or this committee, I guess, technically wants us to move forward with this, then I would look for a recommendation that that staff be directed to do that.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for that presentation. I have so far Laird, Middleton, Hamer, Jackson, and Lepso. Pardon me? Houghton and Morris. Houghton, Morris. Who out, who are you pointing at, Director Thorpe? I've got Director Houghton on my list. I have Laird, Middleton, Hamer, Jackson, Lepso, Houghton, Morris, anyone else? All right, uh, Director Laird.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just a question. Oh, I guess I pointed over here, that'll help. Anyway, I I saw on our budget where we had a reserve fund for um, community parks. Um, because I I noticed that the Aiream had a, that's, I think it was about sixty-five thousand dollars allocated to that particularly reserve fund. So is that available for uh actually doing, if we decide to do a park, that would be available to for some of the funding?
Uh, yes, so each or each electoral area park service will have differing amounts of reserves. So the intent would be that that money still would be devoted to community parks within that electoral area. But there's also reserve funding in the regional park service that's unallocated. So if we were to move forward, there is some existing money in reserves in the regional park service that could be devoted to a strategy.
I have another question. Um, I know in Lower Nicola, we have an existing uh, small park dedicated to the regional district. It's been there for, I don't know, probably twenty-five or thirty years it was allocated from a a subdivision. Do we know how many other pieces of property like that are available or or in the TNRD? As listed as a park and and has possibility of selling and having funds go towards uh other parks?
Yes, we have, actually, just before Agnes Sat retired, she did a full inventory of all our properties, which was amazing, and we um, we have that to tap into. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but it's actually quite a few. I I think it's about twenty or thirty different properties, and and a lot of them are are very, you know, from subdivisions thirty years ago that uh are probably, you know, long forgotten that they're even ours, but we have them in our in- inventory. Your your comment, though, about selling them, that would um, it's an option, but it's not um, the way the way those parks are created, and I'm not a planner, but they'll probably correct me if I get this wrong, but they're when they, when they get created, their a new title is not actually created for that park, so it's land that's designated as park and given to the regional district. But we would have to actually create a title, a raised title, and actually eh before we could actually sell it or do something with it beyond operating as a park.
Just one other point, um, I was in talking to the forestry um in Merritt, and they have a person designated that looks after all different, the trails that are available within that district. And they have hiking trails, they have the cross-country trails, they have the RVs, I mean, I should say, motorbike trails and quad trails, someday. And they have a whole list, and they go right from Logan Lake, great, through the whole area. I was quite surprised how much was available through the provincial government for trails. Uh, thank you.
Director Middleton?
Thank you. Uh, I'm certainly in favor of moving this forward to getting more detailed information and and to putting it as part of a a plan. Uh, just you indicated just back on your one slide that you felt there would be no cost uh to bring forward a proposal to put this or the sort of the rationale. So if we look at step one, uh, have you got sort of the staff available and with time available to put this together? Or is this something that would be perhaps more timely if we were able to uh perhaps authorize a uh, you know, a a co-op student or, uh, you know, somebody like that uh to come in and be able to work? Because by the looks of this, would this just sort of be done off the side of somebody's desk? And we're coming into a pretty busy season here of a lot of other uh, you know, emergency management and uh stuff coming up. Just just your thoughts on where we're saying no cost is is how much of an effect would that have on staff?
Yeah, fair comment. We're in Kevin Iron sitting around looking for more work to do, that's for sure. But um, uh, it it is, it is something that's been um on the kind of our top of our minds that we were actually going to go down this road and create a more detailed report, but then we decided, you know what, let's step back and talk and and just bring this concept up and make sure there's support of it moving forward. So I don't want to say, oh, yeah, we got lots of time, but at the same time, I think that level, the step-one approach, we best coming internally from staff, and we would, we would make time to do that. Um, I appreciate your comments about coming into emergency season, that's why I didn't put a date on this, but sometime by the end of the year would would be the goal, so we could uh, and then the step-two would be where it would actually be cost, like we envision engaging consultants to actually help us through the process of creating the the strategy, and that's where the real heavy lifting would be.
Which is what you would be wanting funding allocated in the twenty-twenty-four budget to to achieve. Okay, thank you.
Director Hamer Jackson?
Uh, yeah, I kind of like the um, two thousand and five policy where little to no cost. And um, I think that probably, and I'm not sure, but maybe you can tell me, um, I think that groups and and volunteers um uh would play a big part, and I and also believe that uh focusing on um volunteer groups that that want things, I think that's going to probably make it more successful, so. Uh, like I said, I I kind of like that very little to no cost, and I'm thinking that's probably how you're going to get there. If there's a volunteer group that really wants something, then it's going to be successful. Am I right or wrong?
Yeah, I think that's a a fair comment, and I think we're seeing that currently, that in certain areas, there's, you know, awesome infrastructure well-run by the community group. Um, but I guess in contrast, where we get comments, and I'm sure some of the directors here do do as well, where there's a lack of infrastructure, parks, trails, that sort of thing, and they want someone to kind of take the lead, and there's no, and we, we as the TNRD at this point don't have any sort of mandate or staff to do that. So those are the kind of things I think that would be identified in the strategy of where those gaps exist. So um, throw out Clearwater, for example, they don't need help developing a a mountain bike trail network. They have the Wells Gray Outdoors Club, who's doing an amazing job there, and they've been doing it for the last five or six years. So, yeah, we would consult with them on creating this strategy, but they really wouldn't be looking for much support. Um, but then I think of kind of the Western TNRD corridor, there's so much untapped potential there. Um, but for whatever reason, there's not a lot of official infrastructure developed, like, oh, yeah, there's a hiking trail if you know whose gate to jump over and sneak in here. So from a tourism point of view, you can't, you know, you can't market that. So and those are the kind of things that I think would get flushed out in the strategy of of where the gaps exist. But I I I totally agree with you, those existing groups, we're not going to try reinvent the wheel or take anything over at all. And if if they're self-sustaining, that's great, let them keep being self-sustaining.
Uh, supplemental, um, and also, I guess, with what you're doing, you could help those groups with uh uh grant funding and things like that, eh, like direct them to that?
Yeah, now, the, you know, that's the idea that if 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 part of a regional program included a a grant and aid, then we could support those existing groups um, that that are doing a good job and and help support their ongoing operation. And I guess just a bit of a background, um, and some of the directors who have been on this board previously will know that um, a lot of uh 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 discretionary funding from the electoral area directors has been allocated to these community groups that run recreational programs in the past. But it's not like core ongoing sort of funding to help support their operations. They ask once a year and hopefully they get it, kind of thing.
Director Lepso?
Uh, thank you very much. So I'm actually the champion for the Saskatchewan Mountain Hiking Trails. Uh, Skamana, we actually came up with a business plan, it's fully funded. Now, uh, my suggestion is just to get a hold of the Shoe Swap Trail Alliance. They started this in twenty-ten, they're coming to give a presentation. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Directors Houghton, Morris, Blackwell, and Vice Chair Smith. So Director Houghton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'd like to see us go ahead with a, some kind of a strategy. I know Director Morris and I are have that ongoing issue at Pritchard Beach, really our hands are tied because all we got is a garbage can and a porta potty, and uh, we'd like to do something further to that to develop it and have a little control over it. Now, Director Newstater and I have talked about doing something out of Keke, Keke Willie by her place, maybe. But there again, you know, we're going to have a meeting, I think, I think Katie was going to cook those burgers that day and uh have an open house at Keke Willie. And see what the the residents would like, and I know Joe Kang and I are going to meet with the stewards of Monte Lake to see what we can do out at Monte Lake. Uh, so, but we need a strategy. Thank you.
Director Morris?
Thank you, Chair Rodden. Uh, well, this one's true and dear to my heart, no doubt. If any of you sadly went to my website, you'd see that this uh, this twenty-year strategy idea around uh accessibility and network of trail systems, particularly for Area P, is very near and dear to my heart. Um, everybody talks about the values of tourism, and surprisingly, I am not going to speak to that. I see the um the value truly to be the community health, people that live in our areas that have um diverse ways that they can keep moving. Um, and that is with the e-bikes, and yeah, there's some huge infrastructure questions. What can we do with Modi to create Shoe Swap Road as an example? Won't get into the the devil, the devil is sort of in the details, but it is about um aging populations and young people coming into our communities and how are those accessible trail systems? We're going to have those high-end, you know, mountain bikers, and I'm, they're going to be up at Al's Place and over on Juniper or whatever. But this is the piece um that I think is really important for us. So I think I applaud you, thank you, that we're going to maybe look at going forward on a strategy and and um and deliver to one or two future generations a really livable place. Um, and Area P can be the example. We can go Little Fort all the way down out to Pass Katie and out to Skamana. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, well, I know, uh, speaking to the mountain bike portion, I know they're they're developing a lot of them in the northern part of the Western Corridor, Clinton and Big Bar, et cetera. But I have heard from people who are knowledgeable about these things that they would love to see more organized trails further south, so down around Cache Creek, Ashcroft, even further south. Because that means that the mountain bikers can get an earlier start to their season because winter ends sooner down in the south. So what's happening in the north part of the Western Corridor is great, but we could do with developing that in the southern portion in order to to get the people to come here that much earlier, and then they will follow the trails north as weather permits. Uh, Director Blackwell?
Well, thanks. I didn't think it was up yet. Um, yeah, lived this for thirty-five years. Um, I started off in my first BC Provincial Park when I was about eleven or twelve years old, also ran the Big Bar Lake Guest Ranch on ATV. So like tourism or firewood to tourists. Uh, lots of thoughts on this as somebody who has tried a lot of stuff in parks. Um, first off, right now, the thing that you also need to consider other than the mountain bike parks is dog parks. You need dog parks. Um, if you don't, you'll have an unofficial dog park, and you'll be dealing with it anyways. Um, we've, we we've felt that USOP knows all about this in Birch Island. Um, there's a lot of things that I've tried and haven't tried that definitely don't work, uh, and some that do, uh concessions, don't count on concessions as an income source. Um, unless you create a serious destination, it's not going to subsidize, and they'll just fail over and over again. A positive, a lot of these parks, um, especially the ones that are in community, and I I really think the focus should be on the value to communities as they allow a resting place and a bathroom for people that are traveling, so they're not crapping on the side of your highway. Um, the mountain bike trail idea is fantastic, and I see it as a growth idea, but I look at the places that succeeded that, the Elmont uh Cumberland, I've toured quite a few of them, and they really need to be tied directly into a community, so it has to be a community partnership. Um, and the the main thing on almost all of these things, they're always going to be subsidized. You can get community clubs, and I sponsored community clubs for years, and Wells Graded to do track setting for cross-country. Uh, they will come, they will go, they will fail, they will destroy each other. And then you will need somebody else to maintain those things, so um the one thing that generally keeps some cohesive is a steady supply of grant and aid funding and us helping uh with a whole bunch of other things. So they are never ever going to be sustained by themselves. Don't ever count on it, it just isn't going to happen, you're never going to have the volume of people. You need a destination marketing organization or something like a ski hill in order for that to happen. Um, so really look at the value of what you're looking at here, primarily as community related parks of value to the local citizens, and if you start from there and they grow out from there, then they do have value uh in a lot of senses. Um, because they do enhance communities, they do create that growth, and the real benefit, when you want to talk about money, is the spin-off in somebody staying in a motel room locally or eating at a restaurant for the day. It's not going to be directly to the TNRD, it's going to be to the businesses that need to establish, need a little bit more in those communities. Thanks.
Thank you, and I have Vice Chair Smith.
Um, thank you for bringing this forward as you can, um, as you alluded to, Logan Lake has been working on this uh for quite some time. Um, I have to say that our campground is our only asset that actually makes us money. Um, so there's definitely an economic opportunity uh for the TNRD um in that realm. Uh, we are Uh, we are um, in the midst of working through the details. Right now, we have a trail strategy um, potentially funding for it as well. Um, and one of our major partners is actually going to be our community forest, which extends quite a bit out there um, into T N R D land. Uh, so I just wanted to mention that um, um, community forests would actually be a really good um, connection uh, for any sort of trail work that's happening, um, because they build a lot of unofficial sort of trails inadvertently. And I just, um, our our um, Outdoor Association has been doing the majority of our trail work um, in Logan Lake for forty-plus years. Um, obviously, many of you know that's a good part of that system was burnt um, through the Tremont uh, fires. So we're hoping um, that our strategy will get some funding um, partially for that reason. But um, also because it's, 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 it is an untapped um, business. So I definitely would would support a tr- uh, trail strategy. I think it's an excellent idea. Our community sees it as an overabundance of gazebos, um, but many of them are actually trailheads. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Sal.
Sorry, late addition there. Um, uh, Mr. Viera, do you see like a need of a committee sort of similar to utilities and policies? Um, you know, it's obvious every one of us uh, have a lot of um, ideas. Um, I'm just concerned maybe down the road when we need to act on these ideas, if, you know, having them brought up at a board of directors meeting of that bog things down and have a, having a committee to review and make recommendations for us at that, something you foresee?
Yeah, good question. And and I think alluded to it a bit. I I foresee possibly a, a, a committee involved in the development of the strategy. But then depending on the outcome and the direction of it, if we just, for example, if we were to sort of expand the the regional parks function that's funded by all the areas um, and increasing the budget and more operations within that that service, then I could see the potential that that might need committee to work through these details, prioritizing projects, that sort of thing. I mean, this is, you know, kind of forward-thinking, but but the, my short answer is yes, possibly down the road that that would, that would warrant a committee.
Cue. Uh, lunch is available down the hallway. Um, and so to facilitate moving towards that lunch down the hallway, I would like to make a motion that the Committee of the Whole recommend that the Board of Directors direct staff to start to develop a detailed staff report on the process, timing and cost for developing a parks and trail strategy. Whoa, okay, Director Bass, I saw you first. And I do have it written down, Corporate Officer Campbell, in case I spoke too fast. All right, any further discussion on this? No? On the question, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We sit adjourned, lunches down the hall, uh, hospital board meeting starts at one-thirty.